Participants must register on Active Montgomery. Auditions will be held at these locations from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Moco's Got Talent finale will be at the Fillmore Silver Spring on Sunday, May 22. To register, visit activemontgomery.org or call (240) 777-8080. Now it's time to meet our Pet of the Week. Kathy Stanhope joins us from the Montgomery County Animal Services and Adoption Center with more. Kathy?
Your Pet of the Week this week is Alyssa. And Alyssa is the cat that has been here at the shelter for the longest. So come on, folks, we need a home for Alyssa. As you can see, she's a girl, and I say that because when cats are three colors, they're almost always female. She's a spayed female. She is looking for a home. Please visit Alyssa on the web at montgomerycountyanimalservicesandadoptioncenter.gov or give us a call about Alyssa at (240) 773-5900.
And with that, we close this edition of County Report this week. Remember to like us on Facebook and to join us again at this time every week for a look at what's going on inside Montgomery County. We'll leave you today with the sounds of the Rockville Swing Band kicking off the spring season at the F. Scott Fitzgerald Theater in Rockville. I'm Lauren Overgillie, and thank you for watching. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Mayo. Oh, sorry.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Kreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Mayo will be joining us shortly. He is at work downtown, and given the closure of Metro today, a little bit more difficult getting home. And Councilmember Smith is at a meeting and will hopefully join us later as well with the Washington Adventist University. Good evening, everyone. Our tonight's agenda is changed slightly. Originally, we were going to have two work sessions, one on the Tacoma Junction, followed by a discussion of a ZTA amendment that the county is looking at on bed and breakfast. We were informed this week that County Councilmember Hans Reamer, who has drafted this ZTA, is going out for more community comment and looking at it, and it will not be taken up until probably June or July. So I think, given the opportunity to spend more time talking about Tacoma Junction this evening, we will postpone that conversation. I know a number of us have been contacted regarding that ZTA, and I suggest that if you do have comments, to call or email County Councilmember Hans Reamer with your comments as he's taking more of those. Looking forward on our agenda, next week is March 23. We will have a closed session first to talk to the police chief about some public safety matters, and then we will start our meeting at 7:30. We have a special time for comments set aside next week on Tacoma Junction, so we're hoping this evening during our work session, people will take the opportunity to listen to the representatives from NDC, and if you go back and look at it if you want. And then next week, we will have a special time to take comments, questions on redevelopment of Tacoma Junction at that time. In addition, next week, during our regular meeting, we will have the first reading ordinance requiring the registration of vacant properties and establishing a vacant property maintenance and security standards. We had two work sessions on this prior, and so we will take up the first reading of it next week. We will have a second reading ordinance amending the stormwater management fee system. The second reading authorizing an FY 2016 budget amendment number three. The first reading is this evening, and we'll be discussing that. We will also have the second reading authorizing execution of an amended agreement with the law firm of Bregman. That's the law firm that the city council has hired to help us with the redevelopment of Tacoma Junction, and we will have the first reading of that this evening. Next week, we also have a resolution appointing the Tacoma Park poet laureate and a resolution providing for the appointments to different community committees. We also have two work sessions next week, one to review the community grants program and the other to discuss synchronizing Tacoma Park elections with state and federal elections. The following week, we will not have a city council meeting on Wednesday evening, so I hope everyone rests up. Because then, when we come back in April, on April 6, we will have a city council meeting that will tentatively start at 6:30 so that we have the opportunity and hope for good weather to go outside with the architect who has been looking at the renovations for the library, so that we can take a walk around and see what different designs and concepts would encompass. So that is on April 6 at 6:30, and we will hopefully confirm that soon. During our regular work session on Wednesday, April 6, we will start to dig into the city manager's FY 2017 budget. And we also have just one voting item, which is the second reading of the vacant properties ordinance that we will have the first reading of next week. Then, beginning on Monday, April 11, we will begin to have two meetings a week, one on Mondays, that will be the budget work sessions, and then our regular meetings on Wednesdays moving forward. So as I said, I hope all my colleagues have marked their calendars, starting on Monday, April 11, we will be having two meetings a week. All right. So I think that is it for the agenda. And moving forward, at this time, we have two voting items this evening. The first is a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2016 budget amendment number three. If anyone has any public comments on that voting item, please come to the podium. All right. Our second voting item this evening is a first reading ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended agreement with the law firm of Bregman, Burr, Bratt, Schwartz, and Gilday for legal services regarding the redevelopment of Tacoma Junction. Are there any comments regarding that voting item? None? All right. Then we will move for public comments on any other items. Please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Cohen, and I'm from Ward 1, and I'm also a member of a group of community members that meant as a follow-up to the November 30, 2015 resolution in support of welcoming Syrian neighbors who are approved as refugees. Out of that meeting, community meeting, a couple of us met to talk about housing, which we saw as the first requisite for determining capacity within Tacoma Park. We met and we identified three areas that we thought would be important to investigate. You have in front of you a series of comments, but let me just briefly review each of the three and tell you how we need your assistance. The first is looking at auxiliary apartments in owner-occupied homes. What we are looking for is councilmembers to maybe send out an invitation on the listserv or to convene a meeting on welcoming people in the neighborhood who have auxiliary apartments or have rooms to rent, so that we could meet with them and find out if they're interested in housing refugees, particularly in response to the resolution, Syrian refugees. Now, let me preface this by saying, at this point, we have absolutely no idea how many people will be here, and it really doesn't matter, because we need to determine capacity when and if this happens. And this will also be a good model for us to understand housing for other groups that might want to settle here in Tacoma Park. So that's what we're looking for in number one. And number two, apartment complex managed by property management companies. We'd like to meet with the principals of the property management companies. If they are in your wards, you have large rental properties that are managed by property managers, we'd like to have an opportunity to meet with them, to see their interests, to get idea of rent levels, how to look at issues like they're looking at prior employment and how we can handle that. And the third one, we are going to be looking at individual apartments that are self-managed, people who might own a condominium and who do rent. We are, with Councilmember Siemens's assistance, we are in the process of getting a list of those from our community, Housing and Community Development, so that we can begin to talk with them and find out their concerns, rent levels. That's something that we'll do after we get the list and consult with some of you. But those are the things that we're trying to do. We want to keep you up to date, but we also want to let you know how we need your assistance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes. Hello. I am Bill Brown on West Moreland Avenue, which is in Ward 3, speaking to you as a constituent. I'm here to talk about a proposed sewer line on Eastern and West Moreland, two blocks between those two streets, that will damage the mature tree canopy. To give you some background, first, let me describe the topography, if you don't know this area. West Moreland lies on the bottom of a steep valley. Up a very steep slope is Eastern, which runs parallel to it. Above that is Big Eastern, which is the dividing line between DC and Tacoma Park. So it's a very steep slope. The water and sewer lines were laid out in the 1910s or '20s. The sewer lines were and still are gravity-fed. Because of the steep slope, the lines were put down the middle of the block along the backyard property lines. Gravity is a big factor in this. The standard now is to put water and sewage under the street in front of houses. Pretty much everywhere else in the county, you'll find that, in the whole area. But in 100 years, trees have grown up and matured along that property line, along the middle of the block. It's a fine canopy. About five years ago, WSSC decided to replace the lines. The first plan they presented to Eastern and West Moreland Avenue property owners was similar to the current one. The main difference was that the proposed easement straddled the property line. WSSC responded to residents' objections, the very same ones we're now raising, by first proposing a non-intrusive method of tunneling. But they still had trouble negotiating with some individuals about granting a right-of-way. They proposed moving the sewer line to the front underneath Eastern Avenue, which is the obvious solution, and you'd think that would make everybody happy, but they can't dig deep enough along Eastern because of the retaining wall. So that means that some houses would need a pump to push sewage against gravity to the main line if it ran under the street. WSSC would install these pumps for free, but homeowners would have to maintain and replace the pumps themselves. They last from 15 to 20 years. It's not a great plan for those individuals who would need pumps, but it prevents WSSC from felling trees the length of two blocks to build a road through our backyards. About two years ago, WSSC cut West Moreland Avenue residents out of the deal without telling us. They went back to the original plan. Supposedly, city, county, and even state government have no jurisdiction over WSSC. I'm hopeful, because I've seen the city tackle some issues on behalf of residents in which they have little or no official influence of jurisdiction, the Galafin School, Montgomery College Master Plan, Washington Adventist Hospital, crossroads on state highways, and Tacoma Park Development. I hope you will help us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Teresa Stubbs from 6713 Eastern Avenue, and since Bill laid out generally what's going on, I thought I would take a little bit more conservationist approach. I'm here to talk about the trenching the WSSC is planning through the backyards on Eastern Avenue, which will also adversely impact West Moreland Avenue in Ward 3. This trenching will destroy beautiful, mature trees. We have an opportunity here to show that we are truly a green community by protecting these priceless resource, our urban forest. There is also the matter of the contrived official vote that the WSSC presented on February 20, 2016 meeting. There's precious little time to stop the bulldozing of our backyards by this voting deadline of March 31. One vote for the backyard trenching alignment is enough to move forward with the most destructive sewer construction option that has been proposed for my sewer block to date. There is also the biased proposition that if a household does not vote, it will be counted as a vote for the backyard trenching, which will be destroying privately-owned property without unanimous homeowner consent. Eastern Avenue is becoming an increasingly busy thoroughfare, making these mature trees in our backyards an even more valuable CO2 filter for our neighborhood, but they also support a larger ecosystem which extends far beyond Little Eastern. We can set a precedent here that our health and that our lives are more valuable than money and power. As a town, we can be a force for good and stand up for the natural community that supports us. I'm sorry, this is very emotional for me. To live in society, we need sewer and utilities, water utilities. We also have a responsibility to be the good stewards of what little nature we have left in Tacoma Park. We can stand together for a less capricious and destructive solution to this complex issue. In today's very busy, screen-oriented culture, it is increasingly more difficult to relate to the simple fact that we are a part of a natural network. We, the entire ecosystem, plants, animals, and human beings, are dependent on each other to remain healthy and happy. The benefits of our old-established habitat extend far beyond our street and neighborhood. Our urban forest is providing food and shelter for a multitude of beneficial life forms, not just birds and bees, which are the most obvious benefactors, but many other life forms which keeps the whole system running smoothly. Not having trees on your personal property does not mean that you are not directly benefiting from this unseen collaboration taking place in backyards every day. As our council, as our city council, please advocate and work with the WSSC, the homeowners, and other elected officials to return to a full and fair examination of the least damaging option, grinder pumps or gravity hybrid sewer system in the street. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Kristowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. The other day, I got a tweet from our mayor, and I'm always happy to get this kind of news, but this told me that the city council 2016 priorities were available for viewing. So I clicked on the link and got the priorities. I was actually pretty excited when I started looking at the list of priorities, and I saw that environmental sustainability was one of them. But then, to my dismay, I went down and looked at the fine print, and I saw that the only thing considered under environmental sustainability was renewable energy. Now, I'm not opposed to renewable energy. In fact, I buy 100% wind power from a purveyor, as renewable as one can get. But sustainability and renewability are really two different things. And I would like to remind the council that we are certified by Sustainable Maryland, and there's a whole group of different criteria, including the natural environment, including food chains, including things like litter, that we are all responsible for as sustainability. I'd also like to point out to council that the Committee on the Environment came up with a group of Green Team priorities, and unfortunately, none of them involve renewable energy, although they did involve energy. And finally, that the Task Force on Environmental Action, several years ago, came up with other long list of recommendations, all about sustainability of the Tacoma environment. So I would like to invite the council to go back and review some of those documents and maybe develop a more holistic and comprehensive view of sustainability, rather than just focusing in on one small aspect, which might take up about, say, 5% of all sustainability concerns. And in fact, what Teresa and Bill were talking about tonight is a grand example of how the council can have a positive influence on a sustainability issue, and that certainly would market it as sustainable Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace?
Yes. My name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. Want to tell you people to start thinking about this. We've got 41 days to vote in our primaries. April 26 is the final election day, the big election day. I'll be down there with the peace sign at the polls, trying to keep people's minds on what we should be voting for. I'd like to ask everybody out there to tell your friends, your neighbors, your mothers, your fathers, and your children to get out there and vote. Don't be a member of the D-Gas Club that don't give a sh**. Please, don't be a member of that. We've got to stop that club. We've got to tear it down. We've got to start getting people involved in their community, involved in the world around them, because they're a member of this world, and we can't just sit here like bums on a log and do absolutely nothing, expect everybody to do it for us. So please, don't be a member of the D-Gas Club. Show everybody that, yes, we give a sh**. And we're going to tell our children that? We're not going to be one of the ones when the time comes and everything is being taken away, that it's too late. We're not going to be one of the ones to say, "I wish I at least voted." We're not going to be one of those. We're going to be one of the ones to stand up, like true-blooded Americans. We're going to stand up, and we're going to show what we merely mean. We are going to vote with our conscience and vote responsibly. Also, I want to ask people out there, and ask the city council if it's possible to get a program for Collins, so that people call in if they're homebound in their apartment, too sick to come out, too elderly to come out, and they're watching the program on the TV, they know something. Let's give them the opportunity to participate. Right now, they're sealed off in society, and I don't like the feeling of that. I've had it happen. So please, work on a program for Collins. I know you can do it. Third thing, and the final thing, I want to get the thing that happened a few weeks ago about the drones, because we know they're illegal to have and to fly them in our county, in our city, in this whole area around the national capital airspace. I want to ask you people if you can get that, what the chief of police said, and publicize it in the newspaper, so that everybody knows what they're doing, if they're going to get involved in it. It's against the law, and I want the city to enforce it, because we want to make this a no-drones community. We don't need that thing. We don't need to hear on the news one day that a drone was crashed into a hospital or a nursing home. We don't need that, or a playground. We don't need it. So please, do what we can. Get that publicized in the newspapers and on Tacoma TV and the other TV stations, if possible. Please, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hope so. I hope so.
All right. We'll turn to council comments then. Before...
Kate.
Oh, hi, Mary Jane. Sorry, is this okay?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Mary Jane, hi. Mary Jane, it's Huey, Ward 2, Boyd Avenue. And just speaking again, I just came back from helping teach Spirit Club class to people with developmental disorders. We aren't exotic like Syrian refugees. People, you know, we're kind of Lois on the Tonopah. When you say you're helping to teach people with developmental disabilities, you're only men who can think, "Oh, she's kind of stupid," or "He's stupid." But if you help people from exotic countries, you're considered really bright and brilliant. But I just want to let you know that we need help, supportive housing badly. And some of us, my friend who's a member of my group, heard she adopted someone from Russia, and that girl really needs help, and she needs supportive housing. And she has to go all the way in Rockville now, away from her family, to get it, and she's thrown into apartment tour with a woman she didn't even know, and in a really bad situation, because they don't get along, and she has no choice at all in the matter. And my son is a son of a man from Kenya, so he could be kind of exotic, I guess you could say. So I just wanted to know that we're asking for your assistance, too, because this is like our home. And also, with the co-op, I heard the Build Your Project was turned down, but if you all could do like a compromise with them, a place where our children could come and hang out, and maybe give my son a job, or just have some of the people who are not as well-off as my son come there just to hang out, or go there one day a week to do things, that would be great. I appreciate the compromise with us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Hubner, Ward 3. Just last week, it came up that there was going to be overnight bridge work, and my understanding was there was going to be some sort of a media blitz about this nighttime work.
I believe we'll get to it, Mr. Beerman. I believe the date has changed, so when we have the city manager's comments, we'll talk about it.
Is there a link or something that I missed?
We have some information. We do have some information on the city's webpage under Carroll Avenue. We can send a link to you, so that you make sure that you catch it.
Yeah, I mean, people are going to want to know.
Right. And my understanding while we're on the topic is that they did change, they moved the week.
They moved the week for the first closing, for the...
So it's been requested since it's spring break the following weekend.
Is there anybody from the city monitoring this? They have one truck and four guys there today. Meanwhile, they're going to work all night for a weekend, you know?
Mr. Beerman, yes.
Maybe light a fire in the daytime, and they won't have to work so much at night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? All right. All right, then we'll move on. Before I turn to my colleagues, I just wanted to, I want to thank Mr. Brown and Ms. Stubbs for coming tonight and talking regarding the work that WSSC is doing. Just to update my colleagues, this is something that myself personally and members of the city staff have been involved with. And in fact, about two years ago now, we asked Senator Jamie Raskin's office to get involved with this, and actually, our congressman, Chris Van Hollen, has also been involved. I spoke with Alice Wilkinson today, who's Senator Jamie Raskin's...
city staff have been involved with. And in fact, about two years ago now, we asked Senator Jamie Raskin's office to get involved with this, and actually, our congressman, Chris Van Hollen, has also been involved. I spoke with Alice Wilkinson today, who's Senator Jamie Raskin staffer. They have requested that the County Department of Environment look at the WSSC's plans before it moves forward. This was something that has been done in the past regarding this project, and the department on the environment did come back, and WSSC had to revise those plans. So we're hoping that the County Department on the Environment will look at this again and move forward with it. But Ms. Wilkinson said she is available if there are other members of the community who would like to discuss this issue with her, and I'm also available, and I know are the head of Public Works. Ms. Braithwaite has been working on this issue as well, and we do hope to find a resolution to it, because the leaky sewer lines need to be addressed, as well as maintaining our tree canopy. So thank you again, Mr. Brown and Ms. Stubbs, for bringing that up this evening. Councilmember Kreshi.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I just have a couple of quick things. I'm somebody, because of my day job, who's subject to the Hatch Act, so the organization that I'm about to list, I'm not saying that I endorse their political activities, but they are doing a, an event, the Muslim Democratic Club of Montgomery County, along with the District 15 Democratic Caucus, and the Women's Democratic Club, and Emerge USA this Saturday, are doing a panel discussion on Islamophobia in the United States and the rise of that. And I think it's very relevant to the discussion we've had about Syria. That discussion is going to be held in Montgomery Village this weekend, on Saturday, March 19th, from 2:00 to 5:00, at the International Cultural Club. If anybody is interested, I would urge my colleagues, if they're available, to attend. If anyone's interested, please reach out to me. Some of the speakers include Rabia Choudhury, who you may have heard of from the very famous podcast on Adnan Syed, which is a case that's very sort of, you know, everybody talks about it. And also, Wajahat Ali is a very well-known journalist, who I think would be great speakers on this issue. In terms of the Syrian refugee issue, I want to thank Ms. Cohen, Fran, and others who are here on it. We did have a very fruitful meeting over a month ago. We are now in the process of trying to arrange something with an outside refugee committee, which has turned out to be a lot more difficult than I ever thought. But for those who are interested, we will be sending out a dispatch or an alert about that meeting once it's planned. But I just wanted to thank you all for coming here. I also want to thank Bill Brown and Teresa Stubbs to talk about the issue they raised. Finally, I just wanted to say, I think today is a very important lesson for us. With the issue with the metro, I think it's a perfect example of when public officials and communities don't invest in their infrastructure, what the negative byproduct of that can be. So I ask everybody in the community and my colleagues to keep that in mind as we discuss new, exciting issues, one of which, to me, is the library, which is a very important institution in this community, which is a focal point for kids and people in our community. But I think that, you know, today was a real eye-opening experience, as I was trying to figure out how to get to work. And I think it was for many others. And unfortunately, the ones who are impacted the worst are those who don't have means, who don't have vehicles, who don't have bikes, or the ability to get from point A to point B. So I ask everybody to think about that, because this community center and other things that we are involved in, in terms of building our infrastructure as a city, cater to a lot of different socioeconomic backgrounds, and we should think about how we want to move forward in that respect. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schultz?
Mayor Stewart, in her opening comments, was talking about the, our decision to delay a discussion tonight on the ZTA zoning text amendment that's been proposed about amending the laws in Montgomery County governing bed and breakfasts. And Mayor Stewart suggested that you refer your ideas and comments to Mr. Reamer. I would just like to add also is that whatever happens at the Montgomery County level, council level, the city of Tacoma Park itself is going to need to review it and comment on it. And so I would also appreciate people forwarding those comments to the city council here, so that we can hear what you're saying, and then we'll be in a better position to formulate our own position with regard to whatever the proposed ordinance at the county turns out to be. In changing the subject to the city's commercial, the county's commercial sign ordinance, I mentioned this last week in my remarks, and about how the county is going to begin enforcing the commercial sign ordinance in Tacoma Park, particularly along the New Hampshire and New University Boulevard areas. And that work began last Saturday, when they sent out three or four teams from the county to knock on every business door in that area. I don't know how many there were, but they did this on a Saturday, spent most of the days. Couple of the teams went about taking down and removing all the signs attached to utility poles, which are illegal. And the other teams knocked on doors, handed out brochures to the businesses about the pending enforcement, to give everybody a chance to see what they can do to get their storefronts in conformance. So I, this is something I think is exciting, and eventually, we're going to see some differences in terms of the quality or the appearance of some of the businesses who've kind of gone overboard and painted, covered their glass windows with paper, signs, and that sort of stuff. And the only other thing I want to say is sort of going from something important and serious to something humorous and personal, I'd like to announce that my wife, Nancy, and I are expecting. And you may say, well, you're a little old for that sort of thing. And, well, what we are expecting is next Thursday, we're going to pick up what will be by then a 10-week-old Irish-setter puppy. And so we're really looking forward to it, and the Schultz household is making preparations for a puppy. And you're all welcome to come see it, but there will be an admission fee. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
I can't top that. Both my children, my son-in-law, were home this week, so that was something. I did want to ask, and maybe the city manager could help on this, several constituents pointed out to me, and I noticed that at the intersection of Philadelphia and Tacoma, which is Philadelphia, of course, is state highway run, there's a big new lighting, traffic lighting apparatus there, and there may be reasons why it had to look the way it does, which doesn't seem to quite fit how things have looked there before. But, and you can let me know about that when you get a chance, but this gets to this larger question, and we heard earlier about WSSC and state highway, and I noticed that there are a lot of markings on Philadelphia that may or may not relate to this, and there's markings on lower Boston. And I think if there were some way, particularly where there's these entities that we don't have as much direct control over, although, as Mr. Brown says, we can still sometimes have influence, if we could get updates in advance so that we know about these things. And, you know, I don't mind hearing about them from constituents, but it would be nice to actually be able to influence how the decisions are made, or the timing at least, which has also come up with the work on the bridge. So that's a larger question, but I think it's something that even the state legislature has looked at. But even at a minimum, if we could know in advance when things are happening, so we can tell people and have a chance to talk about them, so. And later, if we can check on what the story is with that. It kind of looks like the kind of lights you have at an exit off of the Baltimore-Washington Parkway, to me, anyway. The other thing is, I think a lot of people saw this already and got emails about it, but I just think it's worth mentioning, maybe it's not quite in Ward 1, it's maybe in Council Member Siemens Ward, but we did hear from County Council Member Leventhal about funding in Ike Leggett's budget for the, another year's worth of funding for the Piney Branch Pool, at least enough to keep it going for another year. So that's good. Obviously, we need a bigger, long-term solution, but I was happy to see that, anyway, so. That's all I got.
Great, terrific. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Leventhal, I just wanted to check, and Councilmember Schultz mentioned the signage, especially these advertisements for businesses. Ward 4 continues to be plagued by the signs for carpet cleaning that are glued onto the back of stop signs, and I'd like to see if we can't be more aggressive in removing those. But I also wonder if, yeah, if someone can't, if the organization can't be charged with defacing public property, since they do use a glue that does not, is non-removable. Anyways, appreciate your looking into that.
Just a couple of things. Actually, Councilmember Kovar reminded me that we did actually put in language in the state budget this year, and I believe, I'm looking at the city clerk, I think it went in today. It's actually in regarding utilities work and the need to coordinate municipal road projects in a fiscally and environmentally and resident-friendly manner. And so what this means is, the city council had talked about this last year in proposing legislation regarding this on utility coordination with state highway. We weren't able to actually have legislation introduced this year, but with the help of delegates in Annapolis, we were able to insert questions into budget language, which will start answering some of these questions and hopefully move us towards necessary changes, because this is definitely an issue we need to address. In addition, we also had questions inserted into the state budget regarding economic development along New Hampshire Avenue, which will also hopefully move us forward on our economic development issues in that area. So I want to thank the city clerk for helping move that forward in Annapolis. And I actually think everybody else did my other updates. Oh, no, one other thing is, don't forget the deadline of March 31st. If you're going through the process of having your home green-certified, I'm happy to say, I'm like this close to dark green. Just a few more things, yes. And I, that will mean I beat Councilmember Mail, just so, just let y'all know. Not that it's a contest.
He's homeworking on it.
He's homeworking on it, that's right. So don't forget March 31st for that. Okay, turn it over to the city manager for comments.
Thank you. There were a number of questions. I will say that it's budget time, so lots of communication has not happened. So some of the, some information that I would have liked to have this evening, I don't have yet. I would like to address on Carroll Avenue Bridge, there was a proposed closing of Sligo Creek Parkway for delivery of equipment during, next week during spring break, and it's been postponed a week, and I think that's very useful. The final decision on if they're going to work at night doing demolition work has not been made, and so we're waiting to hear that. We still need to get, I, it's kind of hard to like put information on the website that says we don't know, but we're trying to let them know that there's some, you know, that there's a couple of different options that we're waiting to hear on, and as soon as we do have something to really blast out, we'll want to blast it out. As to Philadelphia Avenue, I don't have the answer to that. I know that there's some interest. I have a feeling that it is a utility project that is being proposed to happen at the same time that we're dealing with the Carroll Avenue Bridge, and we've asked that that not happen at the same time. I am not sure that that is what you've seen, but that's what I'm worried about, frankly. On a different subject, the Montgomery County proposed budget came out yesterday. It does include money, as you said, for the Piney Branch Pool for a year. It's giving us the same amount of tax duplication money. I'm still waiting to get some other information. Montgomery County, you know, put out notices that Metro was closing today, and then its servers promptly crashed. So the county had a really bad day, and it's up again now, but some of the research that I'd wanted to do through their budget, I didn't get done. And I will get out some information on what some of those numbers mean for us. A different kind of nice budget thing is that the city won its 10th annual GFOA award for a comprehensive annual financial report. This is the 10th year that the city, and in particular, our former finance director, Yvonda Brooks, has won the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the announcement letter notes that the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a governor, government, and its management. And I just wanted to note that we're out, we insist on getting this, we work really hard to do that, but this year was particularly challenging, because the comprehensive annual financial report had to be different this year because of the different reporting requirements of pension liabilities. And Ms. Brooks retired, she was here throughout the fiscal year, but then she retired. And we were able to pull it all together, and I think we have a wonderful finance department staff for getting that done. I also just wanted to give a heads up that on, we continue to work on the dog park, and the, we're preparing information. It'll take a couple more weeks to have completed drawings to the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission in response to comments they made on our previous submission. Then we expect it'll take another month to get comments back from them. I think at that point, we'll have a pretty good idea about how long it'll take to actually get the construction done. I know Councilmember Mail is interested in setting an opening date. We'd love to set that. I think you'll have to wait just a little bit for the puppy before it can be there, but we're looking forward to—
We will tell the puppy that.
So, let's see, I think that's everything. That's it?
Congratulations on the finance award again.
Yeah, I'm really glad about that.
Yes.
Are there any legislative updates from the city clerk?
I wonder if the deputy city manager might like to provide an update on the freestanding medical facility?
Or me?
Or the city. What did you do? Just gave Jason a heart attack. It's a rough day. We're having, we did have some communication this week on the two bills, one in the House and one in the Senate, regarding the freestanding medical facility. The bill has been a confusing bill in that we've been spending a lot of time trying to determine if the terms in the bill, if the definitions of these terms mean that the bill can apply to Washington and Venice Hospital and allow them to have a freestanding medical facility, and in addition, to not have to go through a new certificate of need to have it. The determination that we've heard so far, and I just learned today, is that the Washington Venice Hospital, moving the acute care but leaving the psychiatric hospital and their rehabilitation hospital, would be allowed to have a freestanding medical facility, but it would need to go through a certificate of need process. The sponsors of the bill do not want any amendments to the bill. It was very difficult for them to craft the language of the bill to meet a number of needs with the members of the Maryland Hospital Association. For that reason, we're trying to see if there's some other approaches that we can take to facilitate the opportunity to quickly get a freestanding medical facility if the hospital so chooses to move forward. And so we're continuing discussions, but I don't think we're going to be a part of this bill this year.
Thank you. Any other updates?
Just the only other thing is, Michelle Douglas reported that the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee voted on SB 585, that was MML's Highway User Revenue Bill. It was amended to make a one-time addition of $25 million for municipalities, only next year, to be distributed by the formula, instead of adding $5 million each year over the next four years to bring it up back to the level it should be. So that's likely to be what will happen this year, and nothing, it's possible— will happen this year, and nothing, it's possible nothing will happen. It won't be revisited for four more years. So, we'll see. That's all.
Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to our voting items. The first is a first reading ordinance authorizing a budget amendment number three.
And please note that I do have a revised version of this document for first reading. As we do, we need to amend the budget. It's been amended twice before. And we have several different items to add to the budget. The first is that we do need to appropriate additional funds for legal services related to the Tacoma Junction Development Project. And as will be seen with the next ordinance on your agenda, there would be a maximum of $60,000 to be able to be spent, and about $42,000 has already been spent by the attorneys on the development agreement, and up to $20,000 more to prepare ground lease. And so, that is one aspect of the budget amendment. We do have substantial funds in a different legal account for labor attorney services that are not going to be spent this year, and so, we'll be able to transfer these funds. We have acknowledgement in this budget amendment of the $453,311 that the comptroller's office misdirected to Montgomery County instead of to the city. That money is coming this month to Tacoma Park for income tax revenue that was owed to us between the years 2010 and 2015. We have, we neglected to include in the budget an item that should have been there, which was the anticipated revenues of $21,800 for lease payments made by the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op for parking spaces on the city lot. And one of the more complex issues in this budget amendment has to do with recognizing the fact that we refinanced the 2005 community center bond. That bond was paid off in July, a new bond, the 2015 community center bond was entered into. And we were able, we are able to then save a substantial amount of money with a lower interest payment. However, we need to record, for kind of accounting purposes, we need to record the monies coming in and going out for the bonds, as well as adjust the accounts that represent the bond payments. So, for revenues, we would be showing a revenue increase of $1,579,730. And then we have almost that same amount to go back out. We had some money in the account, so that's why it's not the full amount. What we will end up doing this year, when they kind of offset each other, is saving about $54,000 just on the bond payments. And then over time, we'll be saving money on the lower interest, on the lower bond payments because of the lower interest rate. We have a transfer among special revenue funds. The state of Maryland requested that our Safe Routes to School program funds be divided into different accounts that separate the budget year that they work with. And we omitted the expenditure account funds for community development, block grant, Flower Avenue project aspects, and those just need to be reflected in the budget. So, we have the funds, we just didn't, for some reason, appropriate that amount in our expenditure account. The total impact of the budget amendment is that the general fund will be increased in revenue by $529,124. And the special revenue fund, the expenditure line will increase by $24,880. That simply reflects the expenditures from revenues that are promised for those projects. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one point.
Go ahead, Councilmember Crushy.
The one, two, three, four, fifth whereas clause, which talks about the parking lot lease payment, is there a reason why you left out the dollar amount? Is it just because it's not an exact?
I don't, I don't know why. It's in the actual text of the ordinance.
Yeah, I saw that. No, I did see that. I just, because I know that numbers are sort of reflected in the previous whereas clause. I didn't know if it made sense to include that, just for purposes of being consistent, but it's a stylistic thing. I did see that on the cover sheet.
I certainly, I can, we can certainly add it as part of the ordinance.
It does seem like the only place where numbers are, is in the comptroller's, the rebate from the comptroller's office. Am I correct in looking at this?
That's right.
And maybe you just wanted to really emphasize that on the resolution.
I was very glad to receive the money, let's just say that. You know, we've been inconsistent in the past, but I'm happy to take a particular direction to put the numbers or not to put the numbers.
Okay, that's fine. I just was raising that because I didn't know if it was oversight or if it's just a stylistic thing.
Councilmember Kovar?
Just a couple of questions. The 453, and I believe the amount's a little bit lower than that because of other amounts, I guess, but the impact will be substantial, right? An additional hundreds of thousands of dollars being put into the budget as a result of that payment from the comptroller, right?
That's right.
So, what happens to that money? Is it available on an ongoing basis, since the next fiscal year? Does it go into a certain account? What, like, what's it available for? Is it part of what you're thinking about now for the budget as extra money?
Well, it's certainly part of what I'm thinking about for the budget. It's $453,000 of revenue in the income tax line. Because it represents about five years' worth of income tax revenue, you know, it certainly isn't what we would expect every year.
Right.
The numbers really varied when we looked at the numbers broken down by year. So, we'll need to make, you know, we're making an estimate for what the increased amount, provided they get the addresses right, the increased amount that we will have for income tax revenue in subsequent years.
But this is sort of a uniquely large one-time thing in a sense, although we'll be getting more if they do the addresses right going forward.
Right, and I think, you know, I mean, if you averaged it, it's, you know, it can be somewhere between $50,000 and $80,000 a year or more.
But as to how this money, this specific money might be used, we don't know that yet, right?
No, and because it is just about three weeks before I come before you for the, for the budget, it'll be a major part of your discussions.
Okay. One other separate thing then, for the bond for the community center, can you just say, and if you don't have it right at hand later, it's fine, when that bond is currently scheduled to be paid off, how much it is?
Sure.
And how much the interest would be, et cetera?
Yeah, it's a, it is a ten-year bond, and I can provide the background information to you separately. The amount is the $1,579,730.
So, that's all that's left?
That's what we need to pay off, yeah. It's actually a little bit different, but it's very close to that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, all right. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
I'd be happy.
Councilmember Schultz moves. A second?
Second.
Okay. Any other further comments or anything? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that's our first item. We'll move now to our second voting item this evening, which is a first reading ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended agreement with the law firm regarding redevelopment of Tacoma Junction. Am I looking at the deputy city manager or the city manager for this one?
I think the deputy city manager can do this.
Okay.
Okay, sure. The city of Tacoma Park solicited proposals for a development attorney to represent the city in all phases of the redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction site. And based on the responses that we received to our RFP, the city selected Bregman, Berberk, Schwartz and Gilde to represent the city in negotiations and in order to develop, to draft a development agreement for council's consideration. Originally, council put a cap of $30,000 on the attorney's fees, and recently met in closed session to discuss finances associated with the Tacoma Junction Development Agreement process, and decided to allocate an additional $50,000 towards legal expenses that were broken up. $30,000 to be used to finalize the development agreement, which will include continued negotiations with the developer and redrafting of the actual document, with an additional $20,000 that could be used for the development of the ground lease for the property. And so, this ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Bregman to extend their existing contract by up to $50,000.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Nope, all right. Do I have someone who would like to move this, please?
So.
Councilmember Crushy moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kovar. Any other questions? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I don't need to.
All right. So, now we will move on to our work session, which I'd like to invite the folks from the Neighborhood Development Company to come on down. And I know we were having some slight computer problems earlier, but hopefully they've been, the updating has been done.
And as they come down, do you want me to go ahead and introduce the item? And Rosalyn will be introducing the representatives of NDC. After many years of discussion and consideration about the revitalization of the Tacoma Junction, the council decided to engage in a public-private partnership to redevelop the site through a development agreement process. And in April of last year, NDC Neighborhood Development Company was selected as that partner. Shortly thereafter, in July, the city engaged the services of legal counsel specializing in development matters to represent the city, that's Bregman, the legal counsel I just referred to in the previous item, to represent the city's interests in the negotiations. Since that time, a draft development agreement was prepared that established a framework for the project and identified the actions that would be required to proceed with the development. It also reaffirmed council's expectations regarding various aspects of the proposed development. Some of the specific items addressed in the document include council's interest in continuing to have the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op continue its role as the primary anchor in the redeveloped property, the importance of providing commercial space for local and regional businesses that are economically viable and that can serve the needs of our community, the possible incorporation of residential uses within the proposed development, and council's desire to provide accessible public gathering space within the development. The city received comments from NDC on the draft agreement in December, and at that point, our legal representatives began discussing various negotiation points with NDC. The council met in closed session twice, once in February and once in March, to be briefed by our development attorneys and weigh in on certain issues that required further clarification and additional guidance from council for the purpose of furthering the negotiations. NDC is here tonight to provide the council and community with an update on the status of the pre-development work that they have undertaken to advance the project, and provide a more detailed overview of their plans for finalizing the design, and information on how they plan to engage the community in the process after the development agreement is finalized. After their presentation, council will have an opportunity to provide comment directly to NDC and ask any questions they have about their presentation. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Rosalyn Grigsby, who's going to introduce the representatives of NDC.
So, here's our Neighborhood Development Company team. I'll start with Adrian Washington in the middle. He's the CEO and founder of NDC. Next to him is Juan Powell, my apologies for the name tag, which we made a mistake, COO of the firm. This is Diara McKinney. He's the pre-development manager for the firm. And on your far right is Michael Giuliani, and he is the associate with the firm. And without further ado, I'll pass it over to you. The IT will advance the slides for you as you leave.
Good evening. So, we are here to provide a status report on where the project is today, and to provide the council and the mayor and the citizens with more information of what's been happening over the last several months. So, flip to the next slide. So, what we'll cover tonight is really the status of the development agreement, pre-development activities, the status of talks with the co-op, as well as what we just talked about, our plan for community engagement. Okay. On the development agreement, you guys just got a pretty quick update on what's been happening today. From our perspective, everything is going fine. Negotiations are in process, and our attorney has been in contact with the city's attorney in discussing many of the matters in the development agreement. We are fully on board with the key priorities, which is inclusion of the co-op, creation of an accessible public gathering space. Community engagement is definitely something that we're committed to during this process. We are committed to bringing local and regional retail into the project, and we are also going to explore the feasibility of residential at the project. On community outreach and government planning, the things that have happened to date over the last, you know, several months, on the community outreach side, we've had talks with Historic Tacoma, members of the task force, the Old Tacoma Business Association, the facade advisory board, and several community members. And on the government planning side, we've had talks with several of the council members, city staff, and council committee representatives, including the sustainability coordinator and the Safe Roadways Committee member. We have also had a number of conversations and meetings with Montgomery County Planning and Historic Preservation. As far as pre-development activities, this is where we spend the bulk of our time. This, to develop a project in Montgomery County is very complex and involves a number of different parties. We have been working with a full consultant team to really negotiate a scope that will allow us to execute on this, on this project, hopefully pretty seamlessly. We always expect to get a fair amount of feedback from Montgomery County, but I will say, we have negotiated both scopes and budgets with all of the consultants you see up here, architect, engineers, title attorney, the civil engineer, traffic consultant, who is going to be very important in this process, especially given the configuration of that intersection, a land use attorney who we've been talking with since the RFP phase. We have talked to a market study consultant, as well as an environmental engineer, you know, which is also going to be very important considering that the site does have some environmental issues with it. With the co-op, we have been in direct communications. We last met with the co-op on March 1st. The subject was really focused on design and programming issues, and the issues that we really honed in on and talked about and updated the co-op on were parking, loading, and business continuity during construction. I think there are a number of next steps. I think, you know, we definitely need to talk more about the expansion space and figuring out how that programming needs to take place. I think once we get down to the level of design, we're going to figure out a lot more about the loading situation and how to get the trucks into the loading area of the co-op. We've also, we also need to spend a fair amount of time talking about the connection between the existing building and the new building that will be built. As far as process, I think we need to really focus on, and I'll start with the third bullet point, really just need to focus more on open communication and constant communication from our side with the co-op. I think, you know, as the LDA has been in process, I think sometimes it's kind of, you know, it's really up to the developer to make sure that we're communicating on a constant basis with our partners. So, I think that's something that we definitely need to focus on. I think the goal is definitely to begin negotiations on that letter of intent and to agree on a process and schedule so we can get to that letter of intent. On the public engagement process, this is something that we've been working on, something that we've been thinking a fair amount about. And I will say, it's still in process, but what we're going to show you tonight and what we're, you know, pitching, I think, is something that the council and ourselves will have to really dig into. So, there are really three different development phases to every single development project. Phase one is typically community consultation. Phase two is the entitlement process. Here, that entitlement process will take place with Montgomery County. And then phase three, of course, is the development process, which is design, permitting, and construction. Phase one, community consultation is what I'm going to focus on tonight. And I'll say, you know, the priorities that really need to be in place are public engagement. We really need to focus on direct participation. We really need to focus on direct participation with the community, and open communications is something that we desire. And so this diagram is something that Mike and I have been working on. Mike, you know, is really, really great at kind of putting together these diagrams, so, you know, don't get too confused, I know it's a lot up there. So phase one, which is what we're talking about tonight, which is the community consultation process, we've really thought about breaking this down into four stages. And during stage two and three is really where the majority of community engagement takes place. Stage one is really kind of where we are right now. It's site analysis, site planning, programming, things of that nature, and interior program development. And that is really something that takes place between the developer and our partners, both the city, as well as the Co-op as a partner. And so I think as far as where we are right now in the community consultation process, we're in stage one. What typically comes out of that site planning process is what's represented in this circle, which is options, development options. There, you know, that will address issues such as traffic and, you know, facade and things of that nature. And this is when, you know, the community really gets involved. And so at this stage, what we are thinking and what we would like to pitch to the council is appointment of effectively an advisory committee who helps guide the process, who helps guide the community consultation process. Stage three is really where the citizens of Tacoma Park will come into play. And so the community consultation process advisory committee will help us set up meetings and guide the priorities that the community cares about most. And so what we're showing here is a series of several meetings that would take place in person in Tacoma Park at a publicly available location at a time that makes sense for everyone from the community to show up and to be able to provide feedback and comments on things that they care about. What we're showing below that is an online portion of the community consultation process as well, and this is really just for communication purposes with people who cannot be at these meetings. We think it's very important for everyone to be a part of these meetings, and that's why we're really focused on providing an online aspect to stage three as well. Stage four is really where, you know, the agencies from Montgomery County and different boards, you know, will get involved in the process. There will be opportunities for the community to comment and, you know, be represented. A lot of these agencies and boards do have community members who are appointed to them. And then ultimately, you know, a development option that the community supports, the developer supports, the city supports, goes to city council and is voted on. And at that point, we move to phase two. As far as schedule, the development schedule that we work off of is certainly a lot more detailed than this. I mean, it's probably close to 150 different items that go into it, but for the sake of brevity, I really wanted to depict here what the schedule will actually look like or feel like, big picture. And so what we're imagining, the community consultation process would definitely take place first. We're showing this going over the next two months. It ultimately may end up, you know, going three months or four months, but that first process, first portion of the process that we talked about under phase two is really what this is. The draft site plan is what comes out of that process, and that's really going to be in the works for several months after the community consultation process. And I just want to make it clear that there'll be a lot of overlap between, you know, the community consultation process and draft site plan development process. There will be a back and forth. We will be coming back to the community at certain points during that second phase. So we're showing that going all the way up to November of this year. And if all goes well, we're estimating council approval towards the end of this year, and then we will enter into the entitlement process, which is a very complex and somewhat lengthy process that'll go about a year. And we're estimating that it'll end somewhere around October, mid-October 2017. And then that's when we go into pre-development permitting and financing. And again, that's when you actually take your conceptual drawings, add a ton of detail, bring them up to construction level, quality, and then go out to bid. And we're expecting to finish construction and get our building, I'm sorry, to finish the entitlement process and get our building permit February 2019. And there is a, I believe it's a 15-month construction process that we're estimating. So we estimate that we'll receive CFO. I know it sounds like a long time in the future, but one of the things we were just talking about is the dog park that you were just referring to. It takes four months to get that done, and, you know, something of this level of importance. We want to make sure we're following all the right steps. And then, next slide, please. As far as next steps, and again, just very high level, on the three issues that we just focused on, I think it is very important for the development team and the Co-op to sit down and identify and continue to work through the issues that we've talked about to try to find congruence and to sign an agreement. On the land development agreement, we certainly want to continue negotiations through our attorneys and sign an agreement in the near future. And as far as the community consultation process, I think we want to finalize that process that we just showed you, refine it, make it better, and then ideally kick off our first event in the near future. So that's it. With that said, I'll take a seat. Our attorney, Joel Bondur, is here as well, and to the extent there are any questions that we must defer to him on, we'll defer.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Any other comments before we open it up to the council?
No.
No? Well, it's good to see you again. Thank you for coming this evening. Colleagues, any comments, questions? They're coming, don't wait. Councilmember Schultz?
One observation is not a question, is that a private enterprise that decided to build a very small fast food place, Taco Bell on New Hampshire Avenue, first broached their plans to the city of Tacoma Park in Montgomery County in December 2014, I believe, or maybe it was a little before that. It took about a year for the planning board to actually get around to reviewing it and approving it, this involving the city. And they are anticipating getting construction underway this year. So this was a very small, single-function purpose building, not much bigger than a house, that is going to, will have taken two whole years just to get through the process of approval, permitting, and construction. And so your timeline seems pretty darn reasonable on this. So I don't have any comments with regard to the time.
As my colleagues warm up, I have a couple of questions. If you could expand on the market study and the traffic consultant, I know those are questions that members of the community are particularly interested in.
Okay.
I guess, can you hear me? I just wasn't sure if I had turned this on. Okay. Okay, I guess, how would you like me to expand? Where would you like me to? I'll start with the market study.
Start with the market study.
Okay. I guess just generally overview. So the impetus for the market study actually came from conversations with, which I had with Terry Siemens. So he had identified concerns about that past work that had been done was not reflective of necessarily all the different parts of Tacoma Park. So what we did was we talked to representative who does have familiar working here in Tacoma Park, and as a result of reviewing the past work that was done by OTBA, you know, the problem with that study is what they did was called customer intercept surveys. So they basically looked at talking to people who were already shopping in both the junction and Old Town Tacoma. So the gap we have is that what we don't have is information from people who may not now be shopping at the junction. And if the goal is to serve the local population, we'd want to actually get a better sense of, well, what do people want and need, as opposed to people who are already here shopping. So I think the second goal that they're going to focus on, based on our conversations, would be when the last study was done, this is basically what we're looking at is an update. And so since the last study was done, there has been changes. We've had new housing created and new commercial uses added. And so what we want to do is understand, well, okay, based on where we were when the last study was completed and where we are today, where do we stand? So that will tell us, you know, give us good guidance in terms of making sure we're targeting types of uses that are, there's still gaps to be filled in terms of potential tenant occupancies. I think that's basically the predominance of what we talked about in terms of their scope.
And where in the process would that go?
I think, you know, immediately. In under the, that basically falls under site analysis. You know, like site analysis, you can look at it as both, you know, local to the actual site, but understanding the environment you're working in. And so that's really what it's about, is collecting that information to help inform the community consultation discussions.
Great.
So we got that one. And then our second question was the traffic study. So the traffic scope right now is quite broad to make sure that, I guess, we looked at, in talking to the consultant, so we included the primary issue, which was to actually understand the implications of a proposed project on future traffic flows. But I think that we also wanted to take a step back and understand, you know, we need to understand existing conditions, how is traffic flowing now, and this is pretty standard with Montgomery County's review requirements. And then also understand the existing parking conditions, and then under, so we can basically understand where we are now so that as we propose the building and we get clear on what that is, that we can then assess the potential impacts. And I think a key part that goes to the objectives of the Co-op with respect to business continuity is that, you know, so they're going to look at a parking management plan in two phases. One will be, how do we deal with traffic and parking during construction? And then the second part will be, well, okay, post-construction, you know, how do we work to effectively manage the junction's local parking supply? So it's a twofold approach. If our objective is to provide parking that will ultimately be public and serving the business center, we want to make sure we're, it really comes down to how you manage it. It's not just a supply question, it's a management question. So that, I think that would entail the predominance of their scope.
Great. And I know you've spoken to representatives of the Safe Roadways Committee. They've provided the city council with a report that, with some recommendations. I just want to make sure you have a copy of that regarding the traffic study?
Yes. And actually, so you highlight another, I guess another key element is sort of, you know, the ins and outs, which will also be a big issue. Based on my conversation with, conversations with the county planner, you know, they're, the county's less concerned about sort of the historic side of it, they are concerned about the aesthetic of the building, but the county's going to be looking at fundamental issues associated with traffic circulation and things of that nature. So we do need to, in working with the Co-op, study what optimal means of accessing the site are and how those may impact traffic flows. So part of their scope is to help us look at alternatives so that we can have a discussion both with the community and with Montgomery County about, well, what makes the most sense from both points of view.
Terrific. Okay. Now their lights are on. All right. Councilmember Schultz?
Just to follow up on the traffic study that you're contemplating, would that study be basically focused on, as you said, the impacts of the project on flows, both during construction and after construction, which would seem pretty, like, pretty obvious? But there's also sort of, if you step back, a larger issue, and that is the workability of the, of the traffic that's there now. And there's been lots of complaints from residents for years about the frustrations of people trying to just get through the intersection today. So, and the thing is, is that, you know, it's, but I understand that you're a private developer developing a private site. It's not your problem to solve community traffic issues, but to the extent that there is a community, a wider issue of just people trying to get through that collection of intersections, it could affect the viability or, you know, the optimization of your project. So that leads to the, my question is, you know, how wide will you cast your study?
I think, I believe that they're going to go for two, you know, so they sort of use an intersection approach, like you have to, they do their analysis within a certain radius, and that's a function of intersections. And for some reason, I'm thinking they looked up to two, but...
When you say "they," you're referring to Montgomery County?
No, the consultant.
The consultant.
So they sort of scoped it out, but ultimately, the, what will happen is, we'll sort of, we set a baseline, and then they're going to talk to the county about that to get the county's input. But that, still, that analysis is focused on understanding the conditions as they stand now. So what they should be able, what that work should be able to help us do is, is, you know, again, have clear information about, well, how do things actually work? Their scope is not dealing with, you know, looking at how reconfigurations of the existing street pattern may change things. That, you know, again, to your point, that we feel is beyond the scope of sort of our role as a developer. We don't control the streets. That, we're just trying to make sure that as changes are made to how you access the site, and as you add different land uses to the property, that we're mitigating as much as you can those impacts.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Mail?
My apologies for being late tonight. Metro makes it a little bit challenging to get back.
Oh, yeah.
There was a bunch of walking, yeah. Lots of other people walking, too. First, do we have an electronic copy of this, or could we get one?
On the website.
Okay, great. Thanks. And I apologize if I missed this, so that's just preface to all my questions. And if I did miss something, then please just feel free to just very briefly reply, and then I can watch the tape. It sort of feels like we lost a year in the process, and I'm just trying to understand from your perspective what, how we've made progress over the last 10 months, nine months, and, you know, whether that was expected, whether there were different things that we as a city could have done in that period, or whether there were unexpected snags from your all's perspective. And I'm asking not because we need to relive the past, but to make sure that as we go forward, we do things the right way. So do you have any comment on that, on where we've, the time we've used so far?
Yes. So, you know, as a bit of a preface, I rejoined NDC recently, about a month ago, so I can recount about a month, but I could tell you what internally we've been doing as the project's been transitioned over to me. So really, over the last year, we've been spending a lot of time focused on initial site planning, working with consultants to do, you know, really preliminary studies of the site. Our civil engineer and traffic engineer have done some preliminary work for us, really just analyzing, you know, loading, if we are expanding the Co-op in certain directions, how that would impact parking on the site and loading on the site, you know, kind of, it's really, it's really been focused on design thus far. We've also spent a fair amount of time working through the schedule, the planning process with Montgomery County, and then, of course, the development agreement has been something that we started focusing on towards the end of the year. But yeah, I think, I think definitely we've been working a lot on the project. I think at certain points, the project has slowed down, but I think, I think our goal is going forward to ensure we're sticking to the schedule.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, Council, do I have to turn this on? I mean, DR is being, okay. I think DR is being somewhat diplomatic. I mean, I'm surprised at how long it's taken, to be honest. I mean, we, I guess, concluded, you all voted, I guess, in April, and we received the first copy of the LDA in, was it?
October.
Yeah. It was, it's a little slow. And we responded, I guess, in about 30 or 40 days. And we're still waiting for response back. So, I mean, to, you know, to answer your question directly, I'm surprised at how long that process has taken. And we've done, you know, the team has done a lot of work. But, to move further, we have to start spending a lot of money. And we would, as you can understand, would like to get our agreement finalized with both you and the co-op. And there, I really see no, you know, substantive issues between them. I mean, I think that we know what you want. It corresponds to what we want. We want the co-op as a partner, as an anchor tenant. So, the issues are all there. So, I think it's pretty straightforward. So, I would like to see the pace increase, personally.
Same here. And just, you know, to the limits of the negotiation of what we can talk about without dealing with lawyers and the back and forth, just, you know, keep us to the timeline that you guys are setting. We'll try to do the same, or at least, from my perspective, I would. What is the sort of, from, let's say, the next three to six months, or six to nine months, or a shorter period of time, what, from your perspective, is the ideal frequency of interaction with the co-op? Like, what is it, what is it going to take in terms of dialogue? And if we're asking questions back to our representatives of sort of, you know, how are those discussions going? What feels to you like a good, you know, back and forth in terms of getting to the, to the point you described, in terms of having that partnership?
Again, my team is going to be mad at me afterwards, but I'll speak frankly. I think that, you know, as I said, I think that we're, you know, we in the co-op are, you know, like, any kind of issue where we're partners, I think that, you know, we're not going to get everything we want. We're not going to get everything that we want, and they're not going to get everything they want. But, again, I think that the issues are aligned. So, our internal goal, we'd like to have an LOI concluded in 30 days with them. And we will work very intensely with them to get that done. And we are, you know, we are very much focused on this project. And that is kind of the goal that we've set, to get that portion done.
Okay. So, for us to, you know, to check back in and expect something like that timeline?
Yes.
Okay, great. The, one of the slides talks about an advisory committee? And I was just trying to understand what you meant by an advisory committee? Who would be on it, really? And what role would it serve?
Yes. So, the advisory committee is, it's really something that we've been thinking about a fair amount. I think the goal is to have the community involved in the process and to help marshal the process. We've seen it, it really is something that the council would appoint. And so, if there were certain community members, you know, for instance, if each council person had one community member they wanted to appoint, and maybe it's city staff, someone who could help marshal the process, to make sure that the meetings are held in the right locations, to help guide the discussions. I mean, the fact is, the community lives here every day. And as developers, we live here when we have meetings on site, when we come to meet with city council, when we have meetings with our partner, the co-op. And so, for us, we think it's a way, you know, to really engage the community and to push the process along. And we think we can do that in a very efficient manner, in a very effective manner, in a series of three meetings, or, you know, two months of outreach.
So, just, let me go back and forth on that just a little bit. So, what I hear you describing is a set of people who essentially help amplify, recruit, advertise, make sure that people know that there's an interaction going on, and help bring people together? As opposed to a set of people who are there doing a, sort of, playing a special role in decision-making, right? Is that?
No. This is not a decision. For us, there are certain items of the project that have not been decided upon yet. And when we go through the design process and site planning process, we are going to look, as developers, at numerous options. And for us to make those decisions on a public parcel without community feedback is, from our perspective, not the route that we want to go. And so, we see a committee, an advisory committee, as someone we can go to prior to these meetings to, one, help organize the meetings, get the word out, of course, but also to review the options that we plan to present and to give us feedback. I mean, the fact is, if we were planning to, which we are not, just to make it clear, but if we were planning to put a Taco Bell on the site, which we are absolutely not, for the record, we, we would, you know, certainly, you know, want to get feedback on that program, for instance. And I'm sure if we showed that to the advisory committee, they'd say, you should never, ever, ever pitch this again. And so, you know, for instance, you know, one of the things Mike and I were talking about was, what was it? Facade design, or?
We, I think that, yeah, the key is, you know, when we're, if we're preparing to engage with people in a public forum, it would be constructive to have a representative group beforehand to talk to about, here's how the meeting's going to run, here's the agenda, here's what we'd like to cover. You know, maybe we don't want to, although we may look at many alternatives as D highlights, maybe we want to pare those down to a finite few that is digestible, you know, in the forum we're considering. So, I, you know, I think the way to look at it is, it's our litmus test to, when we actually get in the, into the forum, when we're engaging with everybody. I mean, it's a simple question. You know, I mean, a big issue that we've heard is, you know, we want to make sure that this project, or excuse me, the community, what you would like to make sure is that this project serves all of Tacoma Park. Okay? So, you know, even a decision like where we decide to host meetings, it would be, I think it would behoove us to have a conversation about what options are out there and, you know, use our resources in the community to help identify those options. And then, vet, well, where does make the most sense? And frequency of the meeting, time of the meeting, days, things like that. That's really where a lot of value and time would be saved. Because if we do that in advance with, with community partners, then we've already sort of, in a sense, we hopefully won't hereafter that we didn't consider the right locations, if you will.
I would also say, I wonder if also, having a core group, having the consistency of folks who are with you throughout the whole process, because people are busy. And, you know, members of the community are going to be able to plug into this at different points. So, having that core group. What, in other projects you've done, what's an optimal size for this type of advisory group?
I think it varies on the size of the project, to be quite honest. On something of this size, in an ideal world, you know, four to eight, I think, is probably around the right number.
So, what, if I may just ask this?
Sorry.
This advisory committee would be more, would be pretty much process-oriented. They're not going to supplant the community's direct input.
Exactly.
They're just going to help you get it set up to kind of take care of the logistics, like
Yes.
Mr. Giuliani was explaining.
Yes. This is, this is process-oriented.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. And just let me make a comment that, which I think the process-oriented focus is a great way to use it. And, but, but the other caution I'd say is, and to the question before Mr. Washington about sort of timeline, it can take our council a long time sometimes to do things. And so, creation of that committee shouldn't slow you down, right? So, if we can't move fast enough, there's certainly lots of ways to get what you need, I think, in terms of that facilitation to happen, if we're not moving as fast, you know, as that takes. So, please don't let that be something that slows the process down. Or if it looks like it's going to slow the process down, make sure we know that we're not moving fast enough. My last question at the moment was just to the last comments about parking, which came up. Do you have a sense right now of what the existing parking needs are for businesses in the junction? So, when you're thinking about, even without reconfiguring the site, you know, for that property, you know, what is the parking demand right now? What are you trying to factor in? Or are you not there yet in terms of the preliminary work you've done?
We're not there yet.
And that's the, the parking components are in the timeline here?
It, as a part of the, the site analysis phase, that's what, I think, that's the key phase where we would begin collecting that information.
Right.
I have a hunch that there's not enough.
I've brought a last question. From a market perspective, have your views on what the mix of kinds of tenants that you expect would help make this a viable project? Has that changed at all, residential, commercial, kinds of stores or businesses, based on when we very first met about this last year?
For Dana? I would say it hasn't changed. I mean, I know that there is kind of open discussion about the mix of residential and commercial. We're open to either. We think, though, that, I would say our thinking has evolved. I mean, to be honest, I think that our preference in terms of a, a, a great project that works together would be 100% commercial, that the small amount of residential that would, that would, that would be there would be not, not really additive to kind of the vibrancy you typically see in a mixed-use project. And that, you know, it's, it's feel, it's starting to feel like kind of small for that. But, if that was something that, you know, the city saw as a public purpose, we could work that as well. But, that's our current thinking.
Okay, thanks. That's not inconsistent with what I would view as the best uses and the demand for the site. But, I appreciate your comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for coming here tonight, being with us. As you can imagine, everyone's anxious to see progress, see this move forward. And so, I'm glad to hear that you're kind of frustrated with the distance we've covered and the amount of time we've had. I just wanted to ask, during the, or in the original request that the city published and you responded to, we suggested that we would be interested in, in the developers' discussions with neighboring properties, to see if there were any opportunities to combine properties. I just wondered if that's something you've addressed yet?
We are evaluating the options. I don't want to get into negotiations publicly, just, just because they are negotiations.
But, you do remember seeing it in our request.
We do. We do. And we are very focused on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for being here. Just a few questions. So, on the co-op, you mentioned that you hope to wrap it up in 30 days or so? And that?
We're speaking for ourselves. Obviously, we cannot speak for the co-op. But, that, that is our wish.
But, the implication, or the, what you said was, no one will get exactly what they want, which makes it sound a little adversarial. Is it adversarial, or?
Hopefully, what I say was, no one will get everything that they want.
Okay. So, it can't, the rest of it can't go forward, though, really, from what you're saying, until that piece of it is, I understand you're doing all these other pre-development steps. But, until that agreement is reached with the co-op, does that sort of prevent a lot of the other things from moving forward? Is that a fair way to characterize it?
Well, I, not, I would say that, I wouldn't say that that stops everything from going forward. But, I'd say at, certainly, before things go too much further, that, you know, we want to, you know, be arm-in-arm with the co-op and have all the understanding. So, yeah, I think eventually, it would slow things down, but it, things can still move a pace.
So, if you say you want to get it in 30 days, are you sort of handing them a stronger position, potentially?
No. I don't think so.
Okay. So, it looks like the expectation in the timeline is that it would be about eight months to get to the, from now to the point when we would vote. And then, you've got the Montgomery County piece, and then, pre-construction, 18 months or so, and the actual construction of 18 months. And what are the things that would delay those? I mean, in other words, those are good timeframes to shoot for. And I'm sympathetic to what Councilmember Mail said, I wasn't here, but it's for part of the time. But, it's, it may or may not have taken longer than some people expected. But, what do you see as the things that, is there anything that could make any of those times faster? Or is it that, or slower? And if it's slower, what would be the things that could potentially do that? Assuming that the co-op thing gets, gets resolved.
Could you reiterate which, which sort of elements you're interested in most?
Well, any of the four big elements. What are the things that can slow, slow down any of those timeframes? That make it take, you know, another six months, or another year, or whatever it would be?
Well, okay, once, once you move into phase two, you're basically in a, like, a regulatory process. And, you know, they may take a long time, but they are relatively predictable. If hypothetically, somebody went to the planning board and they didn't already inspect whether or not there was enough sanitary sewer capacity, which we have, which is like, is an example of something we've done. And then, we, you know, propose our project, they approve it. And then, you go and you actually do that investigation, and then find out there's a problem. Well, then, you would, you basically reset the clock. So, you know, I think the key is that a lot of what we've been doing is preventing those types of issues. So, the regulatory process, once it starts, it moves at a, at a very consistent timeframe. It takes, again, it takes time. Now, once we've completed the Montgomery County process, there are some challenges that, you know, they're out of our control. You know, how long it takes to review permits, we don't control that. It's, that is seasonal at times, I'll tell you. The, there's a stage in the process which is recording a plat, you know, when you actually, you know, sort of finalize the definition of the boundaries upon which you will build your project. You know, I've heard wide-ranging timeframes for that, you know? And that's just an administrative process that, once we submit our plans, it's out of our hands as developer. So, I would think, you know, there's a lot of, in the middle phase, there's actually, the timing is pretty predictable. But, you know, there are some elements, you know, that when you go through the administrative approvals of like permitting and plat review, that can take time.
So, are those things, and I realize you can't know what the, the things are, I mean, you're doing the best you can to avoid those things. But, are some of those kinds of challenges, like permitting and so on, are those, is there value in the council elected officials potentially being able to help untangle or prevent those things from being factors that really slow this down? Or is it just, they happen, and they happen, and that's it?
I think you'd want to talk to your council about that.
Okay. So, on the question of residential, and I may not, others on the council may not disagree with me, but we just had a big half-day community conversation on affordable housing. And in our council priorities document, there's talk about affordable housing, both rental and homeownership. So, I'm someone who would like to see that there, if it's possible. And I don't know who would be the best person to do this, but could you expand a little bit more on what you said about how it does or doesn't work for commercial and retail potential, but not for residential, or the opposite? But, just what the sort of thinking is and the trade-offs on that, given a parcel of land this size?
Yeah. I think your last point is the key point, that it's a very small parcel. And that mixed use always entails sort of more cost and more coordination. And, you know, we've done several mixed-use projects, and trying to optimize a site for both is a challenge. And there, there are different zoning, there are different permitting, there are different life safety, there are different issues of egress, ingress, there's a number of factors. And so, on a, on a large, you know, multi-acre site, we've got, you know, a couple hundred units of housing and a, you know, grocery store, it's worth doing those things. On a smaller site, it just, the economies of scale in doing that just make it more difficult. You know, as I said, this is a public-private partnership. If it's in, you know, a clear public interest to do that, we'll look at that. But, just as a straight development proposition, what would be most cost-effective? And I think also what would make a more dynamic project for your city center is, is a 100% commercial project.
Okay. Last question. Could you do a similar thing on parking versus walkability? Because there was an earlier question about the parking, but how much of the commercial piece? Whether there is or isn't residential, some people will walk to these areas, but that's just those who live presumably within a fairly small area. How much do we think it will be patronized by walkers versus drivers?
That would be, that would be part of our study. You know, it's not something I'm going to opine on right now, but that's something we'd study very carefully.
But, that would lead to decisions about the number of parking spaces that were needed, presumably?
Yes.
presumably?
Yes.
And, yeah, just to, it is actually part of the scope, to look at also pedestrians.
Councilmember Cresson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. As a freshman councilman who's a Ward III resident and who represents a constituency that cares very deeply about this project, I think it was very important that you were here today. Good luck providing these timelines with exact dates, because I'll get a call on March 31st asking, well, has a community consultation, and I'll just defer to you guys. But I actually want to say that I'm personally very excited about the prospect of what can happen here. But I think what my colleagues have raised with respect to Councilmember Mail talking about losing a year, I want to convey to you a little bit about some sense of urgency that exists in the community. And the way I'm going to articulate it, I think, is perfectly, can be illustrated by a visit by my parents this weekend, and it'll make sense to you in a minute. My mom is an immigrant from Pakistan. When she comes into town, my wife is Irish Catholic, she doesn't cook like that, so it's time to cook, you know, Pakistani food. My mom says to me, we need to take a drive, we need basmati rice, and we'd need turmeric powder, whatever that is. So I was like, okay, Mom, I know a perfect place to do that. So we drive from my house down Sycamore, and she says, I love the trees in Tacoma Park. And then we're pulling over to the side because the streets are backed up, because the streets are so narrow. She's like, you know, the streets are really narrow here. We got to walk and wait for people to go around. She's a straight shooter, as you can tell. We get up to the light at Sycamore, and she says, this light is terrible. We make the left turn there, and she's like, what, you want me to go into this little parking lot? And I was like, yes. We go in there, we buy what we need. She's a devout Muslim woman. I also grabbed a six-pack, which she doesn't know about, but, but that, having that opportunity and doing that was important, you know, and having that in my community is important, and I think that community members feel that way. And then my parents often ask me, what are you always on the phone with community members about? Well, this Tacoma Junction, Tacoma Junction, somebody's talking about Tacoma Junction. And then I showed her, I'm like, Mom, you know, this is Tacoma Junction. And she looks back and she's like, this, really? Like, this is what you guys have been talking about? This is the big thing? I'm like, yes, it's a very important part of development in our community. And I think, talking to my parents and seeing how they recognize that our main street is so great and that it's a walking community in many respects, and the prospect of what can be and what can happen on this site is exciting. And I bring up the co-op point, you know, we're in the pre-development stage, and I think, you know, when you talk about the community consultation stage, I think people are hoping we get there, because I think the community wants to be engaged on it. And that's not anybody's fault, that's lawyers talking in a room, but, you know, I would urge you to have your lawyers do everything in their power, so let's move, you know, without haste and not messing anything up, but let's move forward. I would urge members of the co-op and yourselves to reach some kind of LOI so that we can move forward on that. And of course, nobody can twist anybody's arms, but I think there is excitement on this project, and I think that sense of urgency is just because the community is ready and the community wants to be engaged in that process. And I guess it begs the question with the LOI. I think the question's already been asked. It says on your timeline here, this March 31st date, presumably you are aspirationally expecting the LOI to possibly be done by that point?
That was an aspirational date.
Okay.
But we, as Adrian mentioned, you know, we're already in the middle of March now, but in 30 days, we're hopeful that we can make a lot of progress. And so we want to, you know, we're as excited as you are and we're as excited as the community is, and we want to see this project happen. And so, you know, the quicker we can get to the LOI and the quicker we can get to a DA, I think everyone will be a lot happier to enter into that next phase of community consultation.
And then the final question that I have without, you know, aside from expressing the sort of excitement about this, is the committee. I know that we've talked about them being sort of stewards of the process and sort of allowing you to tap into community input. I presume it's still early to etch out how those conversations are going to happen in terms of topically versus, you know, stages of construction. I mean, I'm not a development guy, but in other projects that you've done, how do you approach those sort of community meetings? And, I mean, again, I'm sure the answer is based upon the size of the project, but how many community meetings do you have, and what do they look like, and how are they sort of organized, and how is the agenda put together?
Okay, I think the key, and we've, we talked about this since we responded to the RFP initially. So I think that there's a couple things. We want to make sure we cover all the right issues. And I think from our, the last conversation we had, you know, we have a good grasp on what the issues are. So, you know, I think right now, we've, in that schedule, we've sort of got a month blocked out to host our interactions, you know. Now, how many meetings happen in that month, that's, we have to sort that out. But the goal would be to have all of the meetings, basically, they aren't, we aren't progressing, like Meeting A does not feed into Meeting B. The goal is Meeting A and Meeting B, we're covering the same topics, and the goal there is to be inclusive. But, you know, really what it comes down to is we want to have those sessions, and that should be enough, including with the online support. What I think is important in terms of what we're doing here is there's different types of community action, interactions that can occur. And like, what, you can look at them as, it's called convergent or divergent. And what divergent means is you're talking like big ideas, and sort of, it's open-ended. And we want to talk a bit about those, but really, you know, this is a development exercise. At a certain point, we have to draw precise walls that will pass the test of a building code examiner. You know, we can't go in there without a definitive representation. And so our task as developers is to, is to whittle that down. And the advantage we have is that at this stage, you know, you've already done, the city as an entity has done a lot of great work, and the community has done a lot of great work. Organizations like the FASAD Advisory Board have created great standards, guidelines, excuse me, and we have the work of the Safe Roadways Committee, we have the work of the task force. And so the goal is to bring a lot of that and our site analysis work to basically come up with already refined ideas. And it's more about understanding the pros and cons of those, as opposed to, we're not going to sort of start from scratch. So, you know, in my mind, it shouldn't be an overly elongated process, because we have a lot of the information there to have a focused discussion.
And that was going to be my follow-up point. I think I was going to point you to, and I'm glad that you've mentioned it, that there has been immense amount of community resources and resident resources put into the, you know, the Junction Task Force Report, the Safe Roadways Committee. So we have a number of specialized groups that have addressed a lot of these issues, which I think could present a perfect sort of list or menu of ideas to sort of work off of for these committee meetings. But thank you again, and good luck on this timeline.
Councilmember Schultz?
I want to address the timeline as it pertains to the city council and the city staff. Like everyone else, I guess I can say, not only in this dais, but in this room, we don't want this process to take a week or a month longer than it needs to. But certain things are contingent on other things. One of the obvious things is that, right now, you're spending your own money on this project, in the faith, that, having the faith, that there's going to be a development agreement signed, but there's a limit to that, to what you, to how much you can, you can outlay without going, at a certain point, everything's going to stop because it has to. You just can't finance this project. So we understand that. The development agreement itself hinges on a satisfactory letter of intent with the co-op, and that's not something that the city council has any responsibility for, or even wants to have any responsibility for, just other than to encourage it, the, both parties to continue to work together. So when I look at this timeline that we have up on our screen here, you're shooting for the city council's approval sometime near the end of this year, and that would be the preliminary site plan, I guess, is that what we would be kind of saying, this looks like what we want. Is that not correct?
Unfortunately, I want to make sure I have what you have.
It says the, it's the seventh or eighth slide. It's the one on the screen. The first red dot coming from the left says council approval, 11/15/16. I am happy to.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same. So, okay, now that we're on the same time page, let's reiterate the questions.
The question is, is that you heard what I said about certain things being contingent on other certain things.
Yes.
Which we're all aware of.
Yes.
But it looks like, according to this particular slide, the council's remaining task or ultimate task is to provide the approval at the end of this phase, phase one.
Yes.
So you can then enter into the entitlement phase. And so what I'm getting at is that there's only so much that we as a public body can do in order to expedite this process. And maybe we could have done, you know, what last year could have been done more quickly. But just going forward, it sounds to me like this idea of an advisory group to facilitate process is an excellent one, makes a lot of sense, practical sense to me. I'd rather you be getting that kind of guidance from residents in the community rather than from me, or, you know, and we can take care of that, I hope, pretty quickly, since that's what you're asking for, and it seems pretty sensible. But beyond that, we'll look forward to the letter of intent being taken care of, and then we, after, from what I've seen of the draft agreement that we had a chance to review and close session and commented upon, it sounds to me like there's an awful lot of stuff there that we're pretty much happy with. Mostly, it was a process of clarifying and defining terms more precisely, so you knew what we were talking about when we made, you know, passed our resolution last year. So my point is, not so much as a question, is that there's not a whole lot to do for us to facilitate this process, except to move expeditiously, once the, to get that development agreement signed. And then, once you've finished this phase and move into the entitlement process, basically, you're not going to be coming back to or needing us to do too much. From that point on, it's pretty much going to be on Montgomery County's schedule.
Well...
And your work schedule.
Yeah, in the, as far as the first phase, yeah, but, you know, we will, we basically have to go and start the formal process, but ultimately, you know, we would have to, we would have to come back to council as a result of what we may hear from the planning board. So it's not, your role doesn't end at this point. I wanted to make sure that's clear.
All right. Well, no, that's a very important point that you're making.
And I'd also add that I think that the council and really the citizens of Tacoma will be helpful in that process. I mean, this will be a, you know, very important project, and, you know, frankly, you know, Tacoma Park is very influential. You kind of punch well above your weight in terms of politics in the state and the county. And so we do hope that you all will be able to, either members of the council and citizens of the city can help influence and speed up this timeline.
We would be delighted to do that.
Councilmember Mail?
Thanks. Let me just follow up on Councilmember Schultz's question, just so I really understand some specific things. Also, November 15th in 2016 is my birthday. So what is it that I would be deciding on on my birthday? That's the council approval of essentially...
And don't forget the cake.
That's not a solicitor. ... of a preliminary site plan, which essentially is the early design, which is at a point at which, you know, we can, we can approve it in concept, but there's a lot of stuff that would change, because you've got the county and the, like, planning pieces. There's a lot of stuff that would still happen, right? So that's essentially preliminary design, what the structure would look like?
Correct. Yeah, you need like a unified concept. You can't, you can't go forward with options, although they, you know, the county has, prior to this action that we're talking about, they've afforded us an opportunity to do so, which is great. But once you enter the formal process, you have to have a, like, a single concept that they are considering. But that, you know, that will be considered through their planning process, which will do with larger issues, and there may be issues that come as a result of that, that, you know, need to have further consideration by you.
And just, so a couple of other key dates. We're talking about the co-op, optimistically or ideally, something like 30 days. There's the final agreement with the city, right? So we've got that document. That's a document that the council will have to go through a public process with. And I don't see that necessarily on your timeline, but I assume the absence of assigned one of those by the council prevents you guys from making some investments that you would otherwise make, for example?
Are you speaking of the actual ground lease document?
So I was, so I was going to ask, that was my next question. So it's a ground lease document, there's a, there's the agreement.
And the development agreement.
The development agreement. So the development agreement, the ground lease, where do those fit into the timeline, and what do we have to work with in terms of that process?
Give me a moment here, if you would not mind. So, you know, you have, you have three sheets before you, is that right?
Yeah.
So the third phase, and once we basically cleared the entitlements, the general approach that we liked to use is, you know, basically, the goal is that you would close on your, the financing of the actual construction of the building, once we get the permit in hand. So it, you know, there's no time lag between when the resources are available to build it and when we have the permissions to build the project. And so right now, under...
So you guys have that for 2018?
Yes, and it's under item 93 is actually, or 93 actually has, you know, where we'd sort of culminate any final elements.
So I'm just trying to understand. So we have a, we have a contract with an attorney with which we've spent about $30,000 so far. We're considering a budget amendment to add money to that. And two of the specific tasks for the work with that attorney for this calendar, or this, excuse me, fiscal year, are developing the ground lease and developing the development agreement. And so if those aren't things that actually get to that point till 2018, I'm just trying to understand what it is that we're developing, what it is that gives you guys...
No, the development agreement is happening first. So that's, that's something that we definitely need to have in place before we start expending resources.
Okay. So what's the timeline on that? What's the timeline you guys have built in for that?
So we're as quickly as possible. And so it's, we're waiting, we're waiting for your comments right now, and I'll defer to our attorney to, if you guys want.
Yeah, I'm not, definitely not asking about content. I just want, I just want to make sure you guys are building those two documents into the timeline.
Yeah.
Because they both involve public process that could take time. So, you know, even if your views are sort of optimistically what you think you'd want us to do, please make sure to tell us what that would be.
Got it. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then just, this is more of a narrative comment, but, you know, I sort of think about this timeline, I was trying to think about in myself what it, what it means for people, right? And it means, one thing is, this is a very clear community need, is focused around the co-op. Another need is focused around tenants and services, right? So what... So what does this mean for me? What do I get out of this? How does it add value to my life? Sort of associated with that, but it's a little less direct, is just simply appearance, you know, what is this place going to look like? Another piece is inconvenience, right? So some of these parts of construction is clearly about inconvenience. Not from your perspective, not from our perspective, there's some excitement about that too, right? But for people who are trying to get through the junction, people who are customers of the co-op, the co-op themselves, people who, other businesses that use the parking spot, the Christmas tree sales, whatever, like, those are all measured by, measured in some way as inconvenience. And then the other piece is uncertainty. So when we don't have a development agreement, when we don't have the ground lease, in the discussions that you guys have, till you get to a point, which ideally happens, of sufficient satisfaction between, with you guys and the co-op, that's all the piece that's about uncertainty. So, you know, I'm just thinking about how we try to maximize the positives of those and minimize the negatives. And so for me, the timeline and the questions about development agreements are about, you know, trying to, trying to, trying to work on those pieces. So I appreciate you all being here tonight. I just, that's just a sort of a closing comment rather than a question. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I'm sorry, I was late. I had a meeting with Washington Methodist University. They want to build a building, but we didn't talk about their building. We talked about a tenant that they had for another property on their campus or near their campus. So some of the questions I may ask, some of my colleagues may have asked them, so apologize for the redundancy. First question regarding the letter of intent. Mr. McKinney, you mentioned that you have talked to the co-op, but where are you in the process? Has the letter of intent actually been submitted to them? Have they commented on it? Is this second comments, third comments? Where are you guys in the process?
I'll defer to our attorney, but we have not submitted a letter of intent yet. Our goal is to start that process as quickly as possible. We have met with the co-op, but we did not talk about terms of a letter intent, letter of intent. But, do you want to?
Yes.
My name is Joel Bounder. As Mr. McKinney stated, the last meeting with the co-op was March 1st. I've had a number of conversations with their attorney to set, try and set up a subsequent meeting, and we hope to do that in the next week, to try and have another face-to-face meeting. And, you know, prior to that time, it's our expectation that we will submit a draft LOI to them. But today, an LOI has not been submitted.
And is there a reason why that you haven't submitted one? I know you guys have been talking, right? I understand that. But in those conversations, you, there wasn't enough meat to put a formal document in front of them to comment on it? Or you thought that you needed more conversations, or the things that were being discussed just did not add to a letter of intent?
Yeah, they, they were just a number of logistical issues with regard to the loading dock and some other, some other issues that I wasn't present for. But because of those, those issues that remain slightly unresolved, we didn't go to the next step to give them an LOI.
Okay. All right. That, for me, is kind of troubling. You know, council, when we started this process, we discussed how the co-op would play in this project. So I assume you guys have thought about this parcel in many different ways. I just hope that you guys have some visions that you can share with us at another time, you know, different uses, different types of tenant mix, so that as a council, we can consider this. But the community wants to know, you know, what's going on, and, of course, why dirt is not moving? Why isn't there a fence around that parcel? So I would just hope that you guys can get together in a room, lock the door, and work out these terms, something, something that you can, I mean, it doesn't have to be the full-blown out LOI, but something that you can at least present to council to say, hey, this is what we have, what do you guys think? I think we would all appreciate that, then you're forcing us to make some decisions, right? Let's move on to the process. Of course, this project is going to have to be approved by the planning board. Have you guys had discussions with them? Have you talked about the project? How do they feel? What are they thinking with their staff?
With the, with the planning board staff?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we've actually been in interactions with Elza Heisel McCoy, who's a staff planner with Montgomery County. And he's, was instrumental in helping us flesh out the logistics of the schedule that you have before you. And I think that, like, the key element is, I mean, timing's important, but he was instrumental in advocating for opportunities to, what I think is achieve some of the objectives that were outlined in the LDA, in terms of getting before, getting city staff involved, and then also getting before the various local advisory and, I guess you call them, approval boards. So, and we've also been dealing with Scott Whipple in regards to historic issues. And so he, they both work in tandem when you actually enter the process. So what's before you is, you know, you'll see broken out two separate schedules with us going to the historic approvals branch, as well as the planning board. But from a staff level, they do coordinated meetings, and so we would actually be interacting with them together in terms of ensuring that they were getting consolidated comments simultaneously.
Okay, good. Like my colleague said, please let us know how we can be helpful. We will reach out on your behalf and see if we can make some things happen, because I know a lot of projects get stuck dealing with Montgomery County. So please let us know how we can move this thing forward. What is, I saw the timeline here. It says that you guys think it's going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, a year from the first shovel to you guys getting your CNO. Is that correct? You guys think construction will be a year?
I think it's a function of a few different variables, that as we sort of work through the design development process with the community, some of those variables are going to become clearer. And especially, actually, with cooperative, the co-op has provided a very rigorous, detailed list of specifications, which will help inform how any addition to their building takes place. So, you know, at this point, you know, what we provided is consistent with what we originally provided, which is like a window. But as you resolve things like, okay, what type of actual structural system are you using? That's going to influence your speed of construction. And so we have been looking at alternatives that would expedite that timeframe. But, you know, at this point, it's a long horizon to that point, and so it's hard to give an accurate prediction. As you move, as you move through the timeline, you know, the precision further out becomes clearer in terms of what timing of things.
Okay. And my final question is, we got a list of some of the consultants that you guys are going to bring on the project. Where are you with them? Have you actually had detailed discussions about this project? Have they presented you with their terms of service? Or are we still in just a preliminary phase and sitting around talking about it, and, you know, we would like you to work on it?
No, we've had very detailed discussions. We've actually negotiated scopes with all the consultants that we listed here. We've shown them the schedule and gotten their feedback on the schedule. We've put together a pre-development budget based on the numbers that we've negotiated. So we've actually negotiated numbers with all of the consultants that we've shown in this presentation. We haven't signed it or released deposits, really because we don't want to be at risk until, you know, we're certain that we're moving forward.
Right. And just finally, I would like to say that, you know, I'm excited about this project. I want it to move forward. You know, whatever we can do as a council, as a city, to help you guys, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. I don't think we should wait this long again before we meet again and discuss how we do something with Tacoma Junction. This, this area, this parking lot, has been on the city's to-do list for a very long time. And we're close. We are almost there. So I want to make sure that we can follow through with it. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to give Councilmember Kovar the last word.
Yeah, just one other question that I didn't get to before in the timeline. So your proposed timeline shows us potentially voting on the site plan for the development in November, mid-November of this year. So I haven't been here long, but I've seen how long it can sometimes take us to do certain things up here, and I probably contribute to that myself. But when will we get that document? How far in advance of that 111516 date will we have it, so we can do our magic here and play around with it before we vote by mid-November? That was the one thing. I'm not sure I heard any other questions.
So, based on, you know, what's outlined in front of you, item 41 actually outlines when we would sort of create our consolidated plan for submission. And then there's actually two, or one step before we would come before you. So item 42 is actually, that's actually part of the Montgomery County process. So that would be a public meeting where we would, we have to give notice and declare our intent to what will happen on the site. So by that meeting time, you know, we have to have a set of plans. So, I mean, right now, it's, it's end of item 41 would be the culmination of when we'd have to have those plans together.
So that's four months from then till when you anticipate us voting, but also probably a month when we aren't around, right? That, I mean, that's the time that we're talking about.
So I guess we've got that, that plan set development would culminate the 20th of September.
I thought it said July 15th. Item 41 is July 15th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or are you talking about a different one?
So far, we've been referring to the same information. It seemed to reconcile. I'm not sure. What, what's the label of the task?
Well, when we would first get the draft.
It's the public pre-submission meeting window start is item, line 41 on ours.
Could I just suggest, to be really helpful, you guys gave us a piece of paper that took the subset of these things that are when you might give us something, and when you might want a decision from us on something.
Sure.
If we had just that subset list, then the council knows sort of when we're on the hook.
But if item 41 is the time at which you give us what you think or hope will be the, your best version of the site plan, then we would know, in an ideal world, we'd respond to that by, within four months. Is that, I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. And that would be my last question.
Okay. And I think we can work that out. I don't.
The goal is to have an ample lead time to actually review the drawings. Yes, I think that, and to Councilmember Mound's point, is we'd want to build that into this actual schedule, in terms of when we'd actually deliver something to you in accordance with the larger tasks.
Great. And in the spirit of moving us forward, I would actually like us to take a hand vote tonight on the idea of the advisory committee to give direction to the staff to help us pull together the specifications for it. So all those in favor of moving forward with specifications and a description of an advisory committee for this project, please raise your hands. I'm seeing six out of seven, so if I could please ask the city manager to have the staff pull together a description, and then we can discuss that as soon as possible in April to move us forward.
I like the idea of the advisory committee being comprised of one person from each ward.
Yes. And I think we can, once we get direction from staff, a description of that, we can discuss the details and then move forward, with the hope that it would just take us a few weeks to pull it together. And so with that, I don't think we have any other business this evening. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Love it, love it, love it!